Hey, guys. We're gonna, we're gonna get going. I'd like to welcome everyone to the November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting of the City Council of East Bethel, Minnesota. Please rise to say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visual of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. Under bill list, I'd like to add a supplemental payment summary of a hundred and five dollars. And under the consent agenda, I'd like to add item K scoreboard for East Bethel ice arena.
Okay, the motion's been made. Anyone want to second? Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Okay, under item four, presentations in public hearings, our item A is the candidate interview for the city administrator position. And if you'll indulge me, I just want to make a couple of opening comments. There's been a lot of speculation, a lot of talk, a lot of whatever. Just, just so, just to address the obvious question is what is the point of a change? What's, what's the reason? What's the purpose? And it's just that it's, it's widely believed in corporate world, government, nonprofits, fraternal organizations, faith communities, just about any kind of organization you can think of, that the occasional change in senior management is a healthy thing for any organization, whether it's business government or otherwise. And Jack's been the city administrator of East Bethel for twelve and a half years as compared to his predecessor, which was seven years. And what it does is it brings a fresh perspective, different persons' experiences, a fresh perspective of the job. And if there is any over, any baggage to overcome, it kind of goes with the person and you start making fresh baggage, you know, for lack of a better way to say it. As far as the attributes, attributes that we were looking for, I was looking for in particular, that kind of drove this process was intelligence, of course, good character, integrity, and a breadth and depth of experience, not just in government operations, but in business, ideally entrepreneurial. So you know how businesses operate. And this is a very diverse job. You have to have a lot of different experience. It's a broad kind of job. It requires broad experience. And also municipal and/or county and/or state experience, knowing how the different levels of government operate would be very useful as well. I could get into a lot of reaction about some of the stuff that's been said, not just because it's addressed at me or something, but, but what bugs me is when facts are confused with opinions. And a famous senator, y'all, most of you are too young to remember him. His name was Patrick David Moynihan. He was a very liberal Democratic senator from New York State. And he's famous for a lot of things, but one thing was a quote that said, "You're entitled to your own opinions. You're not entitled to your own facts." Facts, as I think it was John Adams said, are stubborn things. They're either real or they're not. And I just want to make it very, very clear for the record. Before an acquaintance of mine recommended the person we're going to interview, I had not so much as heard the person's name before, let alone ever met him, had any relationship with him, none of that stuff. So those who have been promoting that storyline were just making it up out of whole cloth, just so you know. And that's on the public record and I'll stand by that. No problem. So anyway, that said, I just wanted to give a brief introduction by way of reading an excerpt from the person's resume. Education, four-year degree from Bethel College in International Relations, Political Science, minor in economics, master's in public administration with emphasis on governments, governance and policy from Grand Canyon University. Professional experience, City of East Ramsey, elected council member representing the city at large, was mayor pro tem. That was for five years. He was on the City Council of Ramsey, a fellow Anoka County city. By the way, this person is born and bred in Anoka County resident. Anoka County elected commissioner representing District One, Anoka, Ramsey, now then in St. Francis. That's twenty eleven until present. So thirteen years, the years are inclusive. So thirteen years as on the Board of Commissioners of Anoka County and the board chair this year, the chairman of the board of the Anoka County Commissioners, Chair of the Finance Committee, the Regional Rail Authority, and Internal Audit Committee, Vice Chair of Transportation, past member of the Transportation Advisory Board, Lead Commissioner on Highway Ten and Highway Forty-Seven Project Improvements, successfully lobbied federal and state for transportation investment dollars in Anoka County, implemented debt reduction strategies, self-insurance strategies, and cost-saving measures that led to tax cuts and reduced government spending. And the person is an entrepreneur, too. They've had their own business for twenty-three years headquartered in Anoka. And that's a printer and distributor of campaign and commercial signed products and coordinator of political advertising needs. Established and built company from the ground up, provided print solutions for three hundred-plus U.S. Senate, U.S. Congressional, Governor, State Senate, State House races, advised on numerous campaigns, maintained a forty percent market share in the Minnesota marketplace. So that's the person we're going to be talking to. That's a little bit about their background. The only other thing I wanted to read in for the, anyone watching and for the record, is I conducted phone interviews with two references. One was a county administrator in Minnesota, the other was a county attorney. And there were people who knew this. You know, references are always, you know, I don't know how many of you have ever called on references, but I have never come across a bad reference. I mean, people don't give you the names of people who are gonna run them down, you know. But still, these are, these are people with some substance. And in the case of the woman who was the county administrator, thirty-three years of working with Anoka County. So knows the county extremely well and worked her way up, all, all the way up at a time that wasn't so easy for women. The candidate is a principled individual with a reputation for integrity. Candidate has extensive practical, that's seventeen years, experience as an elected representative at the municipal and county government levels. This includes day-to-day experience, working with staff at both levels to produce results with, results which best serve residents. Intelligent, well-educated, and self-motivated, to not only work toward established goals, but also possesses a curiosity to learn more about all matters affecting outcomes, especially the points of view of others. That's really important in the job that Jack's filled for the past twelve and a half years and this person is being considered to fill. It's great to be principled and, and have your opinions thought out, but if you can't hear other people, you, you're not very effective. You have to be able to hear the other people. And whether you agree or not, at least respect them and, and be able to work with people. That's why I'm not up for as consideration for the city administrator. I'm a bit hard-headed, but that's just my problem. The county, the candidate has county-level hands-on experience, working down an excessive debt burden to a manageable level. When he came into the county Board of Commissioners, Anoka County had a very high debt level, a situation not analogous to ours, we'll put it that way. And it took a lot of work, across a lot of years, to work that down and get it under control. But that's useful experience, I think, for our situation. Private sector experience, including as a proprietor of his own business for the past twenty-plus years. That's important to understanding the business sector's needs and attracting the same kind of people to East Bethel. Nothing, I don't think it can replace experience, owning your own business, working in a business, whatever, with just studying about it. You have to actually do it on a day-to-day basis to know what it's like. Both references emphasize that county staff would be able to work well with the candidate since they are well acquainted and have a mutual respect already. Business contacts at the state capital should prove useful to East Bethel's concerns being heard, including grant seeking, input to transportation system design, et cetera. And this comes from the business that he had, doing campaigns for people at the state level. He made a lot of contacts, so then you, then you have the ability to, where you form relationships with people and they might be able to help you out if they're still in power at the state level. Okay, that's, that's the little background there. I think we're still a little early. Okay, so maybe we should, I don't think the person is here yet. Would you mind checking, Jim? Check out there. Go outside, wave your hands or something. If not, we can just move to the next thing on the agenda. I had, I had suggested seven fifteen, so got done a little quicker than expected.
Can't see anybody yet.
Okay. Okay, well, that's the background. And when they get here, they get here. Not because they're sitting, four of the key people with the staff of East Bethel are sitting in the room right now. But that is, you know, you can, you can say a lot of good things about Jack. And on the twenty-seventh, in the afternoon of the twenty-seventh of November, we're having a, what would you, what's the proper term for it? An open house, but honoring in, in honor of Jack, you know, to recognize his contribution to the city. But one thing that's very important to this person who's being considered was the quality of the staff that we have here in East Bethel. And four of the key employees of the city are sitting right there. And that's, that's a tribute to that gentleman right there. You can always tell good management by the quality of their staff. And this person is enthusiastic about working with all of you guys. He's, he's watched videos and all that kind of stuff and seen people conduct themselves. And so he's, and maybe I might, I might have put in a good word or two for you, too. I don't know. Okay, well, while we're waiting for the person to show up, we can either stand here staring at each other or we can do something on the agenda. You want to deal with the delinquent utility public hearing or?
Yeah, why don't we move on with that and then we can resume this.
Yeah, we'll just knock it out in five minutes and then a person will be here. Who's, who's?
I'll, I'll go ahead with that. The East Bethel City Code of Ordinance, Chapter Seventy-Four, Section Seventy-Four dash one twenty-six, provides for the collection of delinquent accounts through the property tax assessments. This ordinance provides the opportunity for property owners that are delinquent in payments to the city for utility services to come before City Council to state their objections. This public hearing meets the requirements of the ordinance. Public hearing must be conducted before the final certification of delinquent amounts as forwarded to county for collection with property taxes. Council set tonight, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, is the public hearing date for individuals wishing to object to the delinquent charges being collected through the assessment process. All affected property owners were notified via U.S. mail and were instructed to contact staff if they intend to speak before the City Council. No affected property owners contacted staff. The final list of properties with delinquent charges must be provided to the county auditor no later than November the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Staff request that council conduct a public hearing for delinquent utility charges for collection on the two thousand and twenty-four property taxes. At the conclusion of the hearing, if there is no evidence or statements that support the modification of the assessment list, council is requested to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash seventy-nine as a final certification for delinquent utility charges for collection with the two thousand and twenty-four property taxes.
Okay, so we'll open up the public hearing. Public hearing's open for anyone who would like to comment about the list of delinquent taxes. Do we, are we showing that on the screen or? I don't know. Does anybody have any comments to make about the delinquent tax, property tax issue? I misspoke. It's not delinquent property taxes. It's allocated to the property taxes. It's delinquents through water sewer bills.
Are all these residents intoxicated at this time?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there any?
Sir, if you want to come up to the microphone, if you would, thank you there.
Is there any split between rental properties or any of them rental properties? Or are they all home-owned, homeowner properties? Or don't we have that data?
They all appear to be home-owned.
Okay. I'm stunned by that many properties being in arrears.
This is, this is very typical. This list has remained almost unchanged for the past ten years.
Oh, really?
Yes.
I can remember back in the days when I used to have to get every paycheck in the bank right away, but I don't know. Okay.
No other comments, questions? Close the public hearing. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-three seventy-nine?
I move Resolution two thousand and twenty-three seventy-nine.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Too late.
None heard. You want to take a, take a look? I'd like to introduce Mr. Matt Look, Chair of the Anoka County Board of Commissioners, who's our candidate tonight. Matt?
Yeah.
So if you have any kind of opening statement you'd like to make, please feel free.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. For the record, my name is Matt Look. I am, I reside at nine zero three six Collins Drive, Northwest in Ramsey. I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to interview for this position this evening. By way of introduction, I started my political career by finishing a four-year degree at Bethel College thirty-some years ago in International Relations, Political Science. And I also did a minor in economics. And I wasn't quite sure where, where that would take me. I had a professor that worked for Henry Kissinger under the Nixon administration. He had ties with the Central Intelligence Agency and they were looking for candidates for a program. And so I interviewed for that program and was moving right along in, in being considered for that program until the Clinton administration canceled funding for it. So that pretty much ended in its tracks. And so my trajectory kind of changed at that point. And, and I went into corporate America. And I worked for Three M for a short stint, and then I worked for a company by the name of McLean Midwest in heating, ventilating, and air conditioning. And then went on to work for Modine Manufacturing out of Wisconsin, which is also a large HVAC company. The, the companies worked for gave me kind of the incentive to, to go out on my own, start my own company. So I started a printing company in the year two thousand. It catered to political candidates. And my first customer was Rod Grams, Senator Rod Grams. And since then, I've had many, many customers that I've worked with, many of which are at the state legislature, some are federal. But that's afforded me an opportunity to lobby extensively at the state, particularly for county, but, but city as well. And, and as I was working with these candidates, I thought, man, what would possess somebody to run for City Council? I just didn't understand that. And so I thought I would, I would sign up. I would try it. And, and I was elected to the Ramsey City Council. I served four years on the Ramsey City Council. And during that time, I was a little frustrated with the county at that point and some of the things that were going on. And so I, I decided that I would run for the county board. And I was elected for the, to the county board and I've been serving on the county board now for thirteen years. So seventeen years total as public service. And this year, I've, I've, as voted by my peers, I was, I'm voted Chair of the Board. And I've served as Vice Chair in the past before. And so it's a interesting and, and fun dynamic. I've enjoyed working at the county. Very good people. They are dedicated to serving the constituents, working hard to get that work done. And so it's been a, a great tour, you might say, on the county board. But after almost twenty years in public service, you start kind of thinking, what does post-commissioner look like? You know? What is the work of post-commissioner look, look like? And with some of my background and the candidates I, I've worked with, I thought, man, lobbying has got to be on the top of the list. And one of the reasons for that is, I will give you a quick example. And many know that Highway Ten is a, is a big project in Anoka County. And I started working on Highway Ten sixteen years ago to get funding for Highway Ten. And, and many people said, you know, great, need it, no money. Good luck. And we didn't accept that sixteen years ago. So we started fighting for, for whatever dollars we could and, and trying, trying to get that momentum. Just last year, we secured the roughly three hundred million dollars that we need to complete that project. And any of you who've driven on Highway Ten know that, that construction is, is well underway. But I did have a member of Mendoc come to me and say, if you had told us sixteen years ago that you'd have funding by now, we would have laughed at you. We would have laughed at you. And so that was just a testament, I think, of not only some of the work I've done, but others as well, of the contacts that the counties had in getting some of this work done. And I attribute a lot of that to, to some of the relationships established over twenty-three years. And so I just wanted to say that, well, I've been on the county board. I've served as the Chair of the Finance Committee. I've served as Chair of the Regional Rail Authority. I've served on many committees, such as the Transportation Committee, the Building Maintenance and Construction Committee, IT Committee, Public Safety Committee, Property Records and Taxation, to name a few. And currently, I serve on seventeen boards and commissions. So all this is to say that I've had extensive private experience in corporate America. I've had extensive public experience. And, and, you know, again, that conversation kept coming back of what does post-commissioner look like? And so I interviewed for an administrative position in the city of Ramsey. And the one lacking thing I didn't have at that point was a, was a master's. And so I decided in late two thousand twenty-one to twenty-two to start a master's program from Grand Canyon University. And I completed that program recently here, twenty-month program. And I will tell you that sometimes in school, you, you take classes, you're like, you ask the question, well, why in the world am I taking this thing? But in this program, every single class I took was directly related to the work we were doing at the county board in terms of governance, in terms of policy. And I really enjoyed every bit of it, although it was very time-consuming. Anyone who's taken master's programs are very busy. But I just want to, I just want to say, you know, as it relates to the City of East Bethel, I believe that I possess the skills, whether in finance or in lobbying, to directly relate to some of the projects that you might be working on in the near future. And that the goal of which is to, would be to help manage and implement policy set forth by the policymakers yourselves and to continue the legacy that Mr. Davis has, has had over these years. So again, I appreciate the time to interview here this evening. And I know it's a important decision for you to deliberate, deliberate on. And, and I certainly stand for any questions.
Thank you, Matt. If we could, I'd like the questions to focus on in three areas. One is qualifications. Secondly, your vision for what you would want to do if you were offered the job. And the third being what questions you have from, for us, you know? With, with that said, who would like to start with the questions?
I'll start. Right from top of the list, how did you find out about this position?
I was informed by colleague that, that this position was available or would become available. And so there was a kind of a coordination of, you know, of, with the mayor to, to meet and to, I, I never met the mayor before. I never, never considered working for East Bethel in the past. And it was a good time to kind of learn and chat a little bit, so.
Any questions? Oh.
After, after being at the county level, what do you see, granted, there's been, what's going on in my mind, there's, there's been a lot of stuff on social media and a lot of hearsay and a lot of whatever. What do you think East Bethel can do to fix that? I mean, we've got it, we've got a good staff. There's, nobody can, nobody can knock that. So we got a good core. And like, you know, Kevin said earlier, change is good. And it's obvious you're not someone to sit on his hands and do absolutely nothing. I think, I think you got a lot to offer.
So in terms of what would I think needs to happen in terms of responding to social media and that?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, you know, there's, there's two ways of handling social media. You can ignore it or you can, you can face it head-on. I, I face things head-on myself. A lot of people think that that might be a wrong approach to things. But for me, it's a matter of setting records straight. I think in social media today, at least, maybe with the advent of COVID, there's this desire to retell narratives, you know, to, to change histories. And, and whatever the truth is, the truth is. But whatever isn't the true, truth needs to be addressed. And so I generally face it head-on, or I did as an elected official. That's decisions you folks get to make. But I think it's important to, to have a positive message, to always be reminding folks of the good work that the city is doing, the good projects that are underway. There will always be challenges and there will always be opportunities in those challenges. And so identifying those and helping people, you know, a lot of constituents don't spend the time you folks spend, you know, on, on topics. And so they may not have all the information. I often get calls from people saying, you know, just got one today, why, why are, why is my property value going through the roof? And I, and so by simply explaining, well, your property value is market-driven. And if you're, if you're buying a house today, you would probably fully understand that. And so walking through that in a respectful way, I think, is, helps instill, you know, faith in, in this, this governing body, you know, that they would have faith in you and, and understand that the work you're doing is, is good and important and, and that they can trust that you're going to look out for them in the end.
How important do you think it is to have a good line of communication between yourself and the residents?
As a council member or as a?
As a city administrator.
Well, I think, I think residents are always going to call and always going to have questions on various different things. I think. on various different things. I think, I think answering honestly with them and, and covering the information they want respectfully, I think is important. If you, if you try and hide things, or try and, you know, sugarcoat it, or whatever the case is, I think they'll find that out, you know, soon enough. And so that's, it becomes an integrity issue at that point. And you want to make sure that you're telling them exactly, sometimes the truth hurts, you know, but, but as long as you're being honest about it, I think they can respect that.
Thanks, Matt.
There's different styles of management and administrator stuff. Are you more of a micromanaging type guy? Or do you sit back and let your staff do their thing based on their qualifications?
I am not a micromanager. I, I have always, I've been heard many times at the county saying that we pay a professional job for, for a professional outcome. And so my expectation is with hiring professionals, that we let the professionals do their work. And if they're not capable of doing the work, that's, that's a different scenario, obviously. But, but certainly, we would encourage them to, if they're not able to do their work, get the training they need or the resources they need to get that done. And, and let them kind of come up with their creativity. I, I know a lot of corporate America today gives people a certain amount of time to do whatever they want to do. You know, it doesn't have to necessarily be job related. And the creativity that's being found in corporate America today is off the charts. They thought people would screw around or, you know, waste time. But in fact, they, they come up with different ways of thinking outside the box. And, and so in a certain way, you know, maybe a little different in, in government, but still letting people have that ability to think outside the box, come up with other ideas that maybe weren't thought of before, I think is where the value comes in for their professionalism. And so I, you know, I, I, I would rather hire somebody that takes six hours to do an eight-hour job than someone who takes 12 hours to do an eight-hour job. So that's kind of my, my approach to management.
Matt, in my opinion, our city is over ordnanced. And you being on the city council previously, do you know ways that, quick ways that we can get stuff done? Sometimes we have ordinances that we wanted to change that have just drug out and drug out, in my opinion. Do you have different ideas so we can get that stuff moving?
I can certainly commit to taking a good look at it. I mean, I'm not sure exactly the process, how everything works on, you know, in, in your, in your system here. I do recall, you know, in the city of Ramsey, we would, you know, you would literally shake your head sometimes at some of the things that are proposed. And, and some of the council members, even the mayor at the time, just would altogether scrap code, you know? And, and if, if, if you ever heard chalk, you know, fingers on chalkboard for staff, that was it. And, but, but the, you know, the world never collapsed after that, you know? So there was always, but there has to be a recognition of, maybe we went too far on this, or maybe we need to fine tune this a little bit. And so as long as there's a willingness to be objective about it, I think that the door is wide open as far as the policies you guys get to set and want to set, so long as it's within law.
Right, no. Good to know, because to me, it moves way too slow. And just what I'm hearing from you, it sounds like you're not afraid to dig into stuff. And that's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
If I could ask a question. Just, just as a fill in piece of information for those watching, is Matt is currently the chairman of the Board of Commissioners of Anoka County. But he'll be phasing into this job and out of that job over the course of the next couple of months. And even, you know, we were able to work together on details pretty well, I thought. I mean, similar kind of, you know, kind of, you can always work things out if you're willing to look at both sides, you know, come to a reasonable agreement. But Matt's working for 60% of the city administrator's salary in this interim period. And it's not accumulating for later, but 60% of that salary as a, as a commendation, accommodation to us, basically, that there, this transition period. So you can, he can't give 100% to the job here, but he's probably be, going to be given more than 60% of it. And as he phases out on the other job. So I, I mentioned that for a reason. And that is, that indicates a deal making ability that I respect. And I think will be very helpful in working with staff and working with developers in town, even government officials and stuff. That's, that's how you really get things done, is having a capability to do that kind of stuff. And that's on Matt more than me. So my, my question is a real simple one. Given what you know now, and, you know, you're going to learn a lot more in the next couple of months, but given what you know now, and based on all your background, is what would be your primary goal if you were city administrator for the next year or two? What, what do you, what is top of mind for you going into this?
Well, I think that's multifaceted, Mr. Mayor. I think first and foremost, I want to come in, I want to learn your culture. I want to get to know your staff. I want to make sure that the transition is smooth and, and not shocking to anyone. But then certainly, I want to get to know the, the business community and the interests that are out there. And, and I'm sure all that will happen organically. That will take some time to do. And, and then I want to look at some of the, you know, challenges that, that you have in terms of, you know, perhaps issues that are brought up, or whatever the challenges may be that are currently on the table. And how can we, how can we work to solve those? You know, we, whether it's county, whether it's a city, doesn't matter. There's always challenges in every regard. And so how do we handle those things most efficiently? And without blowing things up, you know, that's kind of, that's kind of my, one of my styles that I, I don't really come in and roll the pin, or pull the pin and roll the grenade. I want to make sure that we can get things done reasonably without creating enemies. In politics, creating enemies is about the easiest thing that can ever happen. You could have friends one day, and you vote against chickens, and your enemy's the next, or whatever the issue is. And so.
And they never forget.
They never forget. So.
Chicken guy.
So, so those are some of the challenges that you, you want to make sure that everyone is heard and, and, you know, that you're, you're following up efficiently and, and giving out accurate information, everything else. So again, it's a little bit of a 30,000-foot view. But again, it's, it's a focus on being respectful and innovative, and making sure that the policies that you guys set are, are implemented, you know? The one thing that, that I think is a challenge sometimes in politics today, or in government today, you hear about it in bureaucracies and things like that, is there's a confusion between a policymaker and a policy implementer. And, and you'll hear me say this, you've heard me say this, Mr. Mayor, you guys are paid the big bucks for the policies. And, and it's staff's responsibility to, to implement what you guys are elected by the citizens and, and done for the city. And so is there advice along the way and kind of, you know, coaching and that sort of thing? Sure, naturally. But, but that is kind of the job of staff, is to, is to implement that direction. And, and I've literally had staff tell me that, that I'm a tourist when I was elected. And I said, what, what do you mean by that? Well, we'll wait you out, you know? And that's, and that's troubling. And so from my perspective, that will be foremost in my mind, is how am I, how am I handling the policy implementation? Because that's the direction that you guys vote on up here. That's my majority. And that's what needs to be foremost in, in the work we do, so.
And I get the sense that we can count on you to also give us feedback when you don't agree with policy directions. That, have you considered this? Do you really want to do that? It's got to be a, a give and take, because we are just passing through. I mean, you know, Bob was on the city council 12 years ago, you know, but, and then he was gone for quite a while. And, and so we are kind of tourists, in a sense, from the staff's point of view. But yeah, if, with, again, with the feedback and the give and take, then you wind up with the best results. Not, if anybody gets autocratic about it, they deserve the hook, you know? Whether they're sitting here or on the staff, you know, just, just doesn't work, you know? Got to be give and take. What else?
Explain your understanding of the principles of municipal budgeting and financial management.
Can you drill down a little bit on that question?
How would you come in to set up the budgets and handle expenses?
Okay. So one of the, one of the things that we've done in, at the county in the prior years is, there's always been this desire to take your last year's budget and add inflation to it. And essentially, that's your current budget moving forward. This last year, we did what was called a zero-based budget, which we had, went back and had staff identify every single dollar that they needed and why, justify it. And, and so that kind of reset things for us. You know, there was, I, I think it was an exercise where staff was able to determine what's really need and what's really fluff, you know, in these budgets. And so that's, you know, when we're, when we're kind of facing inflation times and when we're facing, facing challenges with, with whether or not you raise levies, I mean, that's, that's a big issue today for every single government out there. If you haven't turned over every single rock to try and determine where your costs are going and how much expenses you have, it's kind of hard to then go to the taxpayer and say, hey, we need more revenue at this point. You know, in good faith, I think there's a, you know, looking at the budget and kind of determining where the expenses are and, and are you really getting the return on investment that you want from whatever the programs are that you're spending money on, I think is a, is an honest evaluation that needs to happen. And, and, and then from there, you can decide if this budget is, is where you want it to be. Or, you know, or do you want to add some things in there that are maybe don't fall in the need category, but are in the want category? And there's, there's good wants that are out there. And, but we all know that the needs have to be handled first. And so from that standpoint, it's, you know, I would, I would spend a lot of time kind of looking at the budget and trying to determine what costs are versus what is budgeted. And, and, you know, at the end of the year, how much, how much is being spent of that budget versus maybe overspent, or whatever the issue may be. I know for the county, sometimes we establish, you know, salt, a budget for salt. You know, that's a moving variable. It depends on your, the amount of snow and ice you're going to get in the year, you know, as to how much of that salt you're going to use. Some years you're over, some years you're under. But, but that's, it's those type of, kind of comparisons of budget line items to determine, is this appropriate or is it not appropriate? Well, if that answers your question.
How have you managed growth in your previous positions? And what challenges did you face?
You're, you're talking growth of government?
Growth as in the city growing?
Oh.
Population?
Population.
Investment.
New businesses, new, new developments.
Sure.
Economic growth.
Sure. In the city of Ramsey, when I was there, there was a project called the Town Center that some may have read about in the, in the paper. Prior to, prior to me coming there, there was actually people that were, they got in a little bit of hot water for some of the projects that they were doing over there. But this, this project went into foreclosure. There was about 150-some acres that were left out of a 300-some acre development. And, and it was going to forfeiture. When it goes into forfeiture, the county owns it essentially on behalf of the state, and they can dictate the outcomes. The city had a master plan for that project. And this master plan would essentially evaporate when it goes tax forfeiture. And so the city decided we'd step in and, and buy that property at that point. We paid about 12 cents on the dollar at that point for this, for this property. The goal, of course, was to control the outcome of this development. We wanted to make sure that, that the city had control, not the county, in terms of how this was going to develop and, and what it was going to sell for and that. That project is still developing today. One, the train, as you know, the North Star train was going right by the municipal center. And one of the projects I worked on for Anoka County as chair of the regional rail authority was to put a rail stop in at, at the Ramsey Down Center. And, and that rail stop cost us about $10 million, somewhere in that neighborhood, 10 to 13 million dollars. I believe it ended up just over 10. And, and projects identified, like the VA center that came in, there were housing projects that came in, specifically identified that rail stop as the catalyst or the reason why they came to that development. And we saw 150 to 300 million dollars worth of development happening because of that investment. And so answering the question of, of how, how do you expand, how do you plan for development? There is, there is development that can happen, and there's development that is waiting to happen, but kind of needs that incentive to happen. And, and then in this case, the return on investment is huge, you know? To make a small investment like that, and everyone identify that as the catalyst, as why they come. Am I into the North Star train? Not necessarily. I think it's a heavily underutilized asset. However, if we can make an investment like that in, in a town center and be the catalyst to get that town center moving, it was, I think it was the right choice. And it's proven out to be that. But we had, we had challenges with the economy at that point. We're still having challenges with the economy today. But what I will tell you is, from a county standpoint, we have kept, aside from this year, this is anomaly, but the last three years, we kept our budgets flat. And the reason why we did that is because we wanted to set up Anoka County as a, as a place to do business, you know, a place that businesses would call home. I was speaking with one individual who owned a 3,000-square-foot facility in Hennepin County, and his buddy owned a 6,000-square-foot facility in Anoka County. And they were in the furniture business or woodworking business. The building, the 3,000-square-foot building in Hennepin County paid twice the taxes of what the 6,000-square-foot facility paid in Anoka County. And so this is really just bottom line, right, for businesses, to say, where, what am I going to call home? And where am I going to move? And what's going to make sense for me financially? And so we wanted to set Anoka County up that way for development. And, and as a result of that, Anoka County is the second fastest growing county in the state of Minnesota, in part because of that. Now, what does that mean for people? Well, people that used to drive to Eden Prairie are now driving down the road, you know, to a job that they can apply to and, and, and work in, in their own community. So your quality of life is, is enhanced tremendously, because you're not spending an hour and a half in traffic, you know, one way or, you know, or both ways, for a day's work. But again, it's trying to find those, those areas that are, you know, that you, you know, will kind of tip the scale a little bit in your favor for development. Now, some communities don't want to develop. Some, some communities are adverse to development. And that's, City of Dayton maybe is one of those examples, where there were a lot of farmers that owned farmland, and they didn't want any development. The unfortunate reality is the cost of, of doing government business, that is roads and police and fire and, and everything else, keep going up. And you have to, you have to pay for that with taxes. So either your residents are going to pay 100% of that, or you have to get creative to try and find industrial or commercial to try and offset some of that. And that's where the challenge kind of comes with. And that's where you guys are charged with determining what that balance is going to be, where it's going to be located, where it makes sense. But I will tell you is, with the work on Highway 10, businesses are lining up because they know that, you know, the, the highway is going to be easy to navigate now. One of the biggest complaints we got is, I'm not going to move out there and have, have trucks or employees sitting in traffic in a parking lot, you know, in the morning and the evening. 65 is going to be the same story with these improvements that are coming. By the way, 65, we, we set out to find funding for that. We applied the lessons on Highway 10. Took two years to get the, I mean, 100 and some million. We applied the lessons on Highway 10. Took two years to get the, I mean, 100 and some million dollars we got in the legislative session. So those improvements that are going to be done, that are going to be coming are going to radically change the area here. And, and so controlling that change is really your decisions, how that works, you know. And that change, of course, is economic development, increasing your tax capacity and, and allowing you to, to pay for whatever the costs are in government. So. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's all about finding the leverage point, the length of the leverage. It's not the PSI, it's the, it's the leverage point, yeah. Any other questions for Matt?
Why East Bethel?
I'm sorry?
Why East Bethel? What attracts you to this position?
You know, it's a really good question. I will, I will tell you that when I interviewed in the city of Ramsey, it's a lot larger city, a lot more going on. And there, you know, I was a little more apprehensive about that. I think the size of East Bethel is, is perfect. And I think that it would afford me an opportunity to, to really develop within this position. And, and I think some of the challenges you guys are facing, I think I'm, I'm well-suited for. Whether, you know, it's, it's kind of revisiting some of the contracts of, you know, the Met Council or whatever the case may be. It, it's going to take some, 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 maybe thinking outside of the box to get some of that work done. And that's primarily what I've done at the county. I'll give you an example that we, we had health, health insurance was going up 15% every year, 15%. Now, for 2,000 employees, that equates to about four to five million dollars every single year that you have to try and find in your budget. And, and I started pushing against that, saying, we need to look at self-insurance. We need to start controlling this. And, and so we set out to do that. And it was three years ago that we implemented self-insurance. We've had zero increase over the last three years. The employees have not seen any increases. They've gotten the same benefit with zero increases. And so thinking outside of that box and coming up with different ways of trying to handle a challenge that you have, I think is, is going to be something that, that would be more interesting for me on a city this size than a city of, you know, 30, 40, 50,000. So.
Thank you.
I meant, you mentioned challenges that would, that this East Bethel has. Do you know any of the challenges? Are you familiar with any of them?
I am familiar with the challenge with the, kind of the outgoing council and the incoming council and some of the decisions made with the Met Council, yes. I'm familiar with that.
Are you familiar with the sewer and water system?
Yes. Yep. In terms of the debt service portion of it, you're saying?
No, all of it. It's, that's the, the biggest thing that we, why we have to develop is to keep tabs, try to keep tabs on that. But it's only one portion of it. The other portion is economic development and how to accurately fit that development into East Bethel's culture.
Sure. Yep. That's a challenge you get to deal with. But, but I, you know, I, I think the infrastructure is there. So, you know, finding out how that fits with your culture is going to be an important part because if, if and when you get that development, you can offset some of those costs that, that are there. Or the alternative is to try and approach the legislature and, and identify ways to, to try and mitigate some of those costs. I mean, there's reports that were written that may not have been accurate as far as the rate of hookup. And, and so those things, you know, you know, 2020 vision, hindsight's 2020. I think you have an argument to go back to the legislature and say, we need a little relief from this, especially in light of the, you know, 17 billion, you know, surplus that they have. I think that there is, there is definitely an argument there. So how, how you position that, how, how you tell that story at the legislature, I think is critical. Because that, I, I believe that falls unfairly on the constituents here in, in East Bethel. And, and it's, and quite honestly, the state's going to capture those dollars as the hookups are happening. They just need, might need to bear a little bit more of that responsibility than they are. So that, if, if that's the direction of the council, that'd be something I would, I would certainly work on.
Well, if I could interject, I think, you know, we talked a little bit about that because it is a big issue. And that's something that impressed me about your background is I think we could probably do better, not, you know, disdaining anything that's been done, but I think we could do better at securing, that's when I mentioned the grant seeking, is to get debt relief or remediation. I do, I do believe that we could do more in that regard and that your background would be helpful for that. I also feel very strongly, and I'm working on it independent of what I do is with the city of East Bethel, but I want to see the law changed in Minnesota so that four people sitting on a city council cannot put what was at the time 11,000, 11,500 people into millions of dollars of debt without a referendum. And under the law, that was legal, but I think it's completely immoral. And I'm, I'm, I'm working on my own time to change that law. And so you might be able to counsel me to just as far as pressure points and where to be effective and where to be ineffective. But that's, that's just a law that needs to be changed. It should be submitted to the residents, not decided by four people who were then, you know, and did the deed and floated the bonds during their lame duck period before they got, had to leave office. It was, that's, that was what's so objectionable about, objectionable about it was the way it was done. But anyway, that was something in your background and your, your knowledge base that I thought would be helpful for the city as well.
Mr. Mayor, what I might say is this, this legislature might not be the one to, to try and tackle that given the fact that they allowed now the extent, extension of, of levies at least one time without voter approval. Unfortunately, that's, that's a tough one.
Yep.
But, but that doesn't mean you don't lay the groundwork and, and try and get people aware of it. I, I was, I was out ice fishing on Lake Mille Lacs and I bought a, one of those portable ice houses, you know. And, and all of a sudden, I got a knock at the, you know, kind of outside or whatever and I was a DNR agent. Need to see your fishing licenses. And I gave him my license and he says, well, where's your, your fish house license? I said, I'm sorry, my what? And, well, you need a fish house license, you know, and gave me a ticket for it. And I said, I said, you're going to want to remember this day. You know, I was a little angry. And, and so I went and I lobbied down at the state legislature and I said, I understand a fixed fish house, but a portable? I said, you, they don't have licenses for tents, you know, when you, when you camp in, in a state forest, you know, they really shouldn't have for this either. And they, to this day, you do not have portable fish house licenses. And so to your point, Mr. Mayor, yes, sometimes we, you can get in there and you can definitely impact change because there are people that, that can come to your aid and can, you know, can use that and, and support your effort. But it, it, it really boils down to making somebody aware of what's going on down there. They may not even be aware of it.
Yeah.
So educating folks.
Do we have any more questions?
What's your approach to managing personal issues such as hiring, discipline, and performance evaluations?
Well, you know, I think that there is an annual evaluation for every employee. In terms of hiring, you'd want to, depending on the position, of course. You know, we are actually in the process right now of hiring an administrator at the county. We're going out for professional help on that. But, you know, making sure that their qualifications are going to meet the requirement of the job and based on their experience. And, and then kind of, kind of managing that employee along the way and making sure that they're meeting the goals of that position. It's, it's hard to hold somebody accountable if you're not giving them reviews along the way and, and kind of evaluating the work product. So, you know, I'm just sorry, did you say termination too?
Yes, hiring, discipline, hiring, discipline, and performance evaluations.
Yeah, the discipline part, I, it's, it's not a, an area anyone really likes or enjoys. And, and my, my philosophy is you're going to see the light, then you'll hear the horn. And if you're still in the intersection, it's going to get messy. And, and so I, I like giving people fair warning, you know, that, hey, this, this is not working out or, you know, you're not meeting expectations and so you need to improve in these areas. And so you give them ample opportunity. And, and again, it might boil down to resources and it might boil down to education. It might boil down to something that, that the organization can help them develop within. And so I think there's an honest evaluation on that as well. But if there's just a, a, a lack of working out, you know, I think at that point, then there, there has to be a, a change. And that's not necessarily what anyone enjoys at all because we're talking people's lives at this point. And, but hopefully it's, you've come to that realization together that, that expectations are such that they're not being met. And hopefully there's a, kind of an amicable separation at that point. That would be the goal. That'd be the goal to work towards. But, but I, like I say, I like, I like, I like making sure that everything is, everything that could be done has been done to try and improve that employee and get them to where they need to be to meet that, to fulfill the requirements of the position.
Just along that line, being clear what the expectations are is so critical for employee success. And, and if, you know, most of us have managed one person or another at some point in our life and if, your heart goes out to them because it sucks to fail. I mean, and, and the employee who's not caught in it knows it. And it's so frustrating. And hopefully you can find something else that'll work out for them. But, yeah, it's, it's, it's a mutual interest kind of thing. Nobody likes dealing with it. It's just a heartbreaking thing. Well, we're at eight o'clock, after eight o'clock right now. Can we, can we wrap this part of it up?
Just one more. What experience do you have with working with unions? We do have an employee union that regularly negotiates every three years. What experience do you have with unions?
At the county level, we don't, we don't negotiate with the unions. We hire an attorney to do that for us. And, and that kind of takes, and one of the reasons we do that is that generally speaking, the non-union people get the same increase that the union people do. You know, it's just a fairness deal. So, so from my standpoint, I see a little conflict of interest on that, that if I negotiate a large increase for the union, then the non-unions get a large increase too. So it would really be a decision of the council here that if you want to have, you know, an attorney do that negotiation for you, we use Scott Lee Pack is his name, Barna Guzzi, I believe, he works for, I don't know if you know the name or not, but anyways.
All the firm, don't know the individual.
Yeah, he does all the, all the union negotiations for us. He knows kind of, the important part with this is that he knows what other unions are getting and what's industry-wide acceptable. And, and then, you know, you're, you're not really negotiating, you know, at a loss or at a gain at that point. And so we allow him to do that. And then he brings forward the, the recommendation to the county board in this case. And, and we make, you know, we generally approve it at that point because we know it's been a, a good negotiation. Both sides are, you know, and it comes to negotiations, if you have a winner and a loser, I wouldn't say it was successful. If both, if both sides are reasonably happy, I think you've succeeded in your negotiation at that point. So that would be my, my goal is to make sure that both sides are reasonably happy. Right now, with inflation and, I mean, it's, it's difficult, especially with law enforcement and that. You guys know, the sheriff was here talking about some of those increases. It's, it's getting, it's getting difficult to negotiate some of those things. But that's why these, these type of professionals handle that. They take kind of staff's interest out of it and, and negotiate in a kind of an arbitrary type of, type of level. So.
I definitely believe in arms-length negotiations in that situation, definitely. Yeah. vested interests and all that doesn't work. So, excuse me for interrupting.
Don't, don't. Yep.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion, one way or to other?
I would make a motion that we table, make an emotion for any employment until the next meeting so that staff has time to do their proper background checks. And we don't even have a, a package to, employment package, wages, et cetera, to know that what we're offering.
Well, you got that earlier today. That was in that pack that was the employee agreement.
Yeah. I work a full-time job.
That's why I was sent early in the day.
I work a full-time job. I haven't had time to fully evaluate all that.
Okay. Well, I'm not in favor of what you've motioned, but anybody else, anybody hot to second it? Not me. In which case it dies for a lack of a second.
I'm over that. We go ahead with it.
I'll second that. And it'll be subject to, conditional upon there being a successful background check. Your ticket for the portable, portable house, ice house notwithstanding, yeah. Okay, motion's been made and seconded.
Just for the record, Mayor, I want to make sure that we have a clear what the motion is. The motion is to appoint this applicant to the city administrator pursuant to the contract. That's part of the package, subject to a background check.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that I understood that.
No, thank you for, thank you for clearly stating that.
Said it a little more eloquently than I did.
Yeah, that's well said. Thank you. Okay, so that's the motion. It's been made and seconded. And the record can show that Mr. Miller seconded it. All those in favor say aye.
Discussion.
What?
Have discussion.
Is there, excuse me, is there a discussion?
Can you review what the offer is?
Do you have it on?
I, I don't have it on my laptop, no.
I don't know why it wouldn't be. Well, let me see. I can pull it out here. There's a termination with, termination without cause would be a six-month severance, same as Jack's contract. This was based on Jack's employment agreement. Salary being offered is 146, 621. And like I said, until such, either February 22nd or until such time as Matt would be severed from the county employment, he'll work at 60% of the normal salary.
What, 60% of 147?
On a, on a, yeah, on a.
On a gradual basis.
Yeah. And again, it's not being accumulated or anything for later payment like with government shutdowns, you know, everybody doesn't get paid, but it's all accumulated and then they get paid in arrears. Four weeks vacation and recognition of his. Four weeks vacation in recognition of his extensive career already. And then norm, and then the same fringe benefits that the other employees get. It's pretty, have I left anything consequential out, Eric?
You correctly stated the salary, the severance, as well as the benefits. Those are the main employment compensation benefit terms.
And the vacation four, starting at four weeks?
Yeah. That's what it says in the print, yes.
Okay.
You are correct.
Does that answer your question, Brian?
Yeah.
Does that do it for you? Okay. Okay, so we've had our discussion, is there any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard. Congratulations, Mr. Look.
Thank you.
You will be the new city administrator of East Bethel, Minnesota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for the consideration this evening. I look forward to joining the organization and contributing positively.
Well, we look forward to it too, and you and Jack can work out when you can come in and get started on, too bad we can't do Vulcan Mindmeld with you or something, but we'll try to transfer as much knowledge as quickly as possible.
Just watch out for his coffee.
Yeah, and we'll leave it to you gentlemen to work that out.
Okay.
And just, I'll be mentioning it later tonight, but the 15th, which is Wednesday, we have the Fall Town Hall meeting here from 6 until 9, in the senior center right next door. So if you want to attend that, that might be a good chance to meet residents and talk more with the staff individually and all that good stuff.
Okay. I'll put it in.
So.
Welcome to the City of East Bethel.
I will leave you this evening then, for the rest of your business.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
We dealt with the delinquent, you, public, utility, public hearing, and next item is item 4C, which is counting write-in votes for elective offices. And I believe that's why Ms. Frost is here. Carrie Frost, our administrative coordinator. And the person who actually runs East Bethel right there. Yeah, I know, I just say that to embarrass her, that's all. But please.
So, as is in your packet, this item was brought up at the end of September before, but there wasn't an action taken on it. It's a resolution that essentially kind of changes the way we count, or I shouldn't say the way we count, the way we tally write-in votes for, specifically for municipal elections. Right now, if a candidate registers during their candidacy registration time, they will be on the ballot, so their name gets counted no matter what. However, if someone is not a registered candidate, and they desire, desire to be considered a candidate after candidacy filing has closed, they would be considered a write-in candidate. What essentially this resolution boils down to is if somebody wishes to be recognized as a write-in candidate, they would give me a notice one week before the election, so that I know to tally their names. What this comes down to, the day after the election, all of the names that are written in get counted. Every Popeye, Donald Duck, and Darth Vader, I have to count the day after the election. And what this would do is, we would only have, with this resolution, we would only be counting the names of individuals who wish to be counted. So for example, we have our regular cert, regular candidacy filing period opens and closes, you have your candidates for the mayoral race, you have your candidates for the city council race, those would be listed regularly on the ballot, somebody voting for them would just fill in the oval next to their name. But if you have somebody who has decided after the fact, say, random, random citizen, Mr. Peterson, has decided that after candidacy filing has closed, this person wants to run a write-in campaign. They would just give me a written notice seven days in advance that they wish to have their write-in votes counted. If we have another random person, Ms. Johnson, who, her name gets written in, but she's decided that she wants no part of it, even though several residents have written her name in, then I don't have to count those names. I don't have to spend the time the next morning counting those, because she has no interest in it.
Why hasn't that been done before?
That's the way it's done at the state and at the county, but this just, this causes our polit, or our way of doing things to fall in line with how they do it at the state and county levels.
Makes sense to me.
I have one question. What happens to the write-in votes that aren't requested in advance to be counted?
They, they will still be counted. I mean, they're, it's still counted as a vote, it's just we won't have the tally readily, you know, it's not something that we will do just by default.
I don't, I don't follow. So you got a bunch of Popeyes and Mini Me's and whatever?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, so, and they didn't request to be counted as write-in, so what happens to?
Uh, it, I mean, it, it counts as a vote on there, but it doesn't.
But just as a bundle of, a group of write-ins?
It's a group of write-ins.
A group of write-ins, okay.
It's miscellaneous, I, I don't know how to clarify that the best way.
Okay, well, I, I think you did.
But, yeah.
A little slow, but I think I've figured it out fine.
I mean, like, like I said, I'm the staff person, I'll count them if you want me to, but I just want you to know I counted the Donald Ducks, the Darth Vaters, and the Popeyes.
My only concern is with the stuff that we've gone through with elections, the past several cycles, cycles, not in East Bethel necessarily, but in the larger picture, I'm just naturally skeptical of anything that allows anybody with malintentions to divert votes or count them a different way. I'm just, you know, I'm a little cynical, I admit it. So that's just where I'm coming from. That's my problem, my cross to bear.
Yep. My move to pass resolution 2023-67, resolution for counting write-in votes for elected officials' office.
Second that.
Discussion?
That's option one, correct?
Correct, correct, yep.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, motion made and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard. Thank you, Carrie, sorry to keep you here so late.
Thank you.
Item 4D, public hearing, partial vacation of drainage and utility easement, Oak Meadow Estates, 4455 224th Avenue Northeast.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In the urgency of expedience tonight, because I have a laundry list coming at the end of the meeting, I'll make this one relatively quick. On April 15th of 1998, and on February 13th of 2023, and March 27th of 2023, property owners in the Oak Meadows Estates requested and were granted partial easements on vacations near their property. Property owners at 4455 224th Avenue Northeast in the Oak Meadows Estates have the same easement on their property and are requesting a partial easement vacation. I'm going to spare you all of the details that happened in 1975 and 1978, and let you know that, just like the previous two that you've heard, and the third one that was heard in 1998, that the city engineer and the public works director have reviewed the proposed vacation request and have no concerns or objections. I am requesting that you hold a public hearing and consider the approval to vacate a portion of the drainage and utility easement located at 4455 224th Avenue Northeast, with the conditions set forth in attached resolution 2023-76. I can answer any questions at the public hearing.
So we're going to hold a public hearing right now?
That's correct.
Okay, with that, I open the public hearing to discuss the matter of vacation of an easement at the address already mentioned. Does anybody have anything to say about this? If not, we'll close the public hearing. And we have a resolution 2023-76 in front of us to grant the vacation of the easement. Would anybody like to make a motion on it?
Make a motion to approve resolution 2023-76, resolution granting vacation of a portion of a drainage and utility easement at 4455 224th Avenue Northeast.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Okay, Mr. DeRoe seconds it, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard.
Only six more to go, you guys, in the neighborhood. I'm sure the dominoes will keep falling.
Oh, yeah. Is there a way that we can do, is there a way we can do all these at once?
We can replant it for the whole neighborhood if you'd like. You can ask our engineer to replant the neighborhood. That would be at our expense, as they come in one at a time, that's at the expense of the requister or the applicant.
Okay.
But yes, there is a way.
Okay.
We'll suffer through it. Okay, the item five on the agenda is the public forum, and we have, in order, that they're on the list here, I believe it's Ricky Snyder, am I saying that correctly?
She's there.
Oh, she gone?
Just wait.
She says she no longer wishes to speak.
Oh, okay. Then the only other person on the list is Brian Bazanson.
Mr. Mayor, council members. Brian Bazanson, 22337 Quincy. Frankly, I was surprised that, I mean, the way I understand it, Matt Look is going to resign from the Anoka County Board.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, and in the, the, the thing related to late February is he's on the board, a national board of, what is, it's something insurance-related or something, but he represents the county on this national board.
Okay.
And they're having a meeting in Washington on February 21st or something, and so to complete his work before he hands it off, he wants to attend that meeting, and that's why it's that date before he can part company with him. And like I said, in the interim, he's working for a 60% salary, just as a, you know, give and take with the City of East Bethel, so.
I have forwarded to me by someone in East Bethel, an opinion that was written by the Attorney General's Office on an inquiry from the Anoka County Sheriff about whether he could serve on, serve on the Anoka County Board and still take the, the administrator's job here. And granted, I only, I only spent one semester at William Mitchell, Eric, I decided that I was probably better off set to be a carpenter than I was to be an attorney, but I.
You may be more skilled than I, as a result.
I know one thing, I probably sleep better at night.
I'm not sure I'll take about, but you, continue.
No, it's not, and it, it's not a question of guilt, it's a question of, I used to get some pretty good exercise, but then I'd be, then I went into management side of it. Which brings up the fact that something may be, well, number one, I, I was a little disappointed that, number one, that I didn't really get that coming out of, I, I, you inferred it, Kevin, you didn't, it wasn't.
Okay, well, I apologize for not being clear.
Um, we're getting a 15.4% levy increase from the.
I know.
County.
Yeah. I know, 15.44.
And the levy from the city is not nearly anything like that, I think we're down in.
2%.
Yeah.
Well, we could all live in Blaine, that's going to be 19% this year.
Uh, I'd rather go back to law school.
Yeah. Just to clarify something, Matt did inquire of the Attorney General's Office about exactly that question, could I serve, because originally he was thinking he could do both. And I, I just told him, I said, well, that's not going to be of interest to the people of East Bethel, in my opinion.
That, in.
You know, that's, that's going to be divided loyalty, all kinds of issues, but he did request that opinion from the Attorney General's Office, and he got it two or three weeks ago, that it was, there was nothing in the law that precludes him from doing it, but practically speaking, like I'm talking about, it may be a hard sell at either the county or the municipal level.
Which.
And I told him unequivocally, I said, you know, we wouldn't be interested.
Well, thank you.
I'm interim fine, but not permanent.
Thank you, thank you for that, because, just because something is legal.
Doesn't mean it should be done.
Does not mean it's right.
Yeah, well, too wet, too wet.
And, and in my opinion, and Matt had a very impressive interview.
Yeah.
In my opinion, why it might be legal to have used this as a hiring process, where to me it's obvious, and I think anybody that is watching and listening, that the deal was, this was a done deal when he came in here tonight. You have implied that. Just because it's legal doesn't mean it's right.
Hmm.
So.
Well, appreciate you expressing your opinion, that's why we have the public forum.
Absolutely.
And just so everybody knows, every step of the way, I was working with our city attorney, Eric Larson, to make sure that everything was legal, and I was aware that it, and my original intent was to advertise it and all this kind of stuff, the typical way, and then I happened to run into Matt, and I said, well, I can't, I, I said it before at the meeting, I said, I met someone, and I said, I honestly can't imagine finding anyone better suited for this job. I literally could not imagine a scenario in which I could find someone better suited. So, I wasn't joking around, so if it was, if it was acceptable, if he was acceptable to my colleagues, then, one, somebody on, on a Facebook page, people, I, I would, I would avoid Facebook like a hot poker, but people keep, my wife's on it, and everybody keeps sending me stuff, but, oh, well, why don't we hire a professional? Like he mentioned they're doing at the county level? The estimate for hiring a professional consulting firm to find a city administrator in the salary range we're talking about would have cost us $35,000 to $45,000.
You know, I.
That, that's a considerable amount of money.
That is a lot of money.
Yeah.
It is a lot of money.
And it's, and I, and it was, they weren't joking, it wasn't, you know, not buying the sky numbers, and I heard similar 30 to 40 from other people. So, it's like, well, gee, if we're, our likelihood is like 1 in 20, 1 in 30 of finding anyone equal or better, and we're going to save all that money too. I mean, you know, if it doesn't work out, you can go back and advertise and go through all the hoops and all that stuff.
If it doesn't work out, Kevin, it's on you.
Absolutely, that's, that's the good news.
It's on, it's on.
You know who to blame.
Well, that's fine, you know, there's.
And you can get the torches and pitchforks and come over and.
Because I mean, because this was a, you were running a one-man gang on this deal. If you're telling the truth. If you're telling the truth, no one else knew who it was until that packet came out, and it didn't come out, my understanding is it didn't come out until today.
This morning.
Yeah.
I came, I was up here early this morning, having Carrie scan it and all that, and it's because there was enough BS frankly out there, that I didn't wanna provide any more material for people to make up nonsense about, so, and, and the simple fact is, Brian, it doesn't take a village to hire a public administrator, a city administrator, it takes a city council. And they, and they're informed, and they're elected, they're accountable to the people, and yeah, you can all put it on me, I took the lead on it, I, I admit it, and I was very impressed when I met the person, and I'm really not that easily impressed meeting people, but I said, wow, this really is a, a well-prepared person for this, and I, I'm pretty much aware of all the things we're dealing with, from the water and sewer and our indebtedness and all this other stuff, uh, with the transportation issues and all that, and I just said, wow, this is pretty, pretty darn good fit, you know, and plus the person ability, ability to work with other people, that was key too, so, yeah, but you're right, you're right, you can just point the finger right at me and...
I mean, you all know that I spent one partial and two full terms, right there. And I understand...
Sorry, I missed that one.
No, I, I served one, I served one partial term, okay, like Bob is serving right now, and then I, then I, I served two four-year terms, so I have...
You mean on the city council?
On the city council, okay. So I have been involved in the vetting of hiring employees. At the time, we had a city clerk.
Yep.
It was not a city administrator, but I understand that.
Yeah.
You know, how the, how the entire process goes. We would vet with two people for the initial, because we, if we had candidates...
That's fine, that's fine, I get it.
Yeah.
And this was a, a...
Kevin, you were all on my part, and I admit it, I'm admitting it, I'm not denying it, I'm admitting it. To go back where it was before I was interrupted, we would have two people, we would have two, we would have two people cut the list down to three, and then those three would be interviewed by the entire council.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it has been done before, where...
Yep.
Where it has been, people have been hired without having to do that.
You pointed at him, the reason, one of the reasons he's on the city council is because he's the only one of us with experience hiring that gentleman over there. He was here when Doug got thrown out a window and they hired Jack, so...
People, people forget when Jack came in, there wasn't a bunch of interviews and applications and whatnot, he was brought up from Public Works. Now, let, let, let's get the record straight here.
I understand that.
Okay. People on the internet and the so-called know are saying Jack was brought up from his position as an assistant city administrator. He was the public works supervisor, if I'm not mistaken. Doug Salke left, Dave Schaaf was brought in, he screwed things up pretty quick, so Jack was brought up because of his past experience. So this hoopla of, oh, all these applications and this and that was denied, that's crap. And you know what? When Kevin says he wasn't acquainted with this gentleman, and I still hear that, or that I was put on here because I'm his neighbor, he asked me to do this, after Mr. Harrington resigned, he got appointed, he knew that I had experience up here. Not because we're neighbors or he knew somebody, it's because of the experience, Brian, and I wish people would, you know, if you wanna make crap up, that's fine, but make, make, make it fact, don't make it just fiction.
First off, don't say you when you're talking to me about stuff being fabricated. I don't belong to any internet sites other than one that's strictly a twin cam gearhead site and a phishing site. To me, social media is gonna be the downfall of this country.
Okay, when you started this conversation, you insinuated that he was an acquaintance of Matt Look.
No, I didn't, no I didn't.
But right now, we're in the public forum.
No, I didn't.
Okay, I, are there any more facts that people wanna talk about? If not, maybe we can put this to a close?
I've had, I've had my say.
Okay, well, we do appreciate you being here, Brian, and expressing your opinions and your thoughts. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Nothing to be excused for, we're human beings. Uh, with that, I guess we'll close the public forum, seeing as how there's no one else left on the list, so we can move on, move on to item six on the agenda, is the consent agenda, and, uh...
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I wanna pull...
And we can pull item K for discussion since it was just added, and Jack can give us a briefing on it.
I wanna pull item D.
Did you say D, Bob?
Huh?
Did you say D?
D, D's David.
Okay. I wanna pull A, I have some questions.
Any other polls from you guys? I've got my own. Oh, okay, well, I also wanna pull item C, item E, and item I. And Brian, you're pulling K, right?
Correct.
So we're gonna approve the consent agenda, the rest of the consent agenda?
Correct, so you need a motion to approve the...
I'm sure, I'm sure by the end of my term, I'll have figured out how to do this, but, without asking you, but I wouldn't keep my hopes up.
You're, you're on the right path, so you seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Brian made that.
I made that, was there a second?
Second.
Second, Bob DeRoche seconds it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard. Okay, item A, Jim, what do you got?
Say, Jack, I got page 19 on the fire department. I just got a question on Ben Newton, $968 for meetings.
That was a conference for fire chief officials that they go to annually, he goes to annually, one of the persons from the fire department, he went up there to delude, and that's what that was for.
So that probably involves accommodations and all that stuff?
Correct.
Okay, then on page 20, under the fire department, small tools and minor equipment Haas alert, I haven't seen that before, $1,784.
That's for the emergency notifications on these vehicles for the optocams they'll be putting on, so that's what those are.
So that's to purchase them, is that...
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, then, uh, page 21, under recycling operations, I guess I don't really understand that Cedar East Bethel Lions, they got $1,200, and then 419, $1,200, and another 419, what, what's that?
The $1,200 is what we pay the Lions Club annually, because they actually operate the center during the week, they come down there, they help sort the cardboard, the glass, the containers, they have their volunteers that do it. The $400 is what we also pay the Lions Club too, they subcontract that out to the East Bethel Bandits, that's for running the recycle Saturdays.
Okay.
Why is it twice? If it's annual?
I'd have to look and see, but it's probably just, it's, the 419 is a monthly payment, so they may not have had that on the last...
Now, there's two 1200s.
Right.
The two, the two...
Was that what it was? Okay.
All right.
That's what I was just trying to figure out, 'cause it's like, now, when we recycle stuff, do we get anything back from that by recycling the stuff or no?
We, we get some back, but all this is paid from our recycle grant, this isn't paid from any city general fund levies, we get this from the $68,000 score grant we get from the county, all these costs are paid from that grant.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got on that one.
Okay, what I've got is, uh, planning, planning and zoning, what?
Do I gotta make a motion on...
No, I'm still continuing on A.
Oh, you're on E?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that.
Easy, easy big one. Under planning and zoning, SSTSLC 10,850.
That is the first half payment for that traffic study that we have to pay 50% upfront for solutions to...
Yep. Okay, good, thank you. And the other one is on payroll, I know I've asked this question before, and I can pretty well guess that the HRA in the middle is, uh, HSA is Health Savings Account, but what is MSRS slash HSA slash HCSP stand for, please?
That's the Municipal State Retirement System and Health Savings Account.
And HCSP is?
Healthcare plan.
Healthcare savings plan.
Okay, with that, I move that we approve item A.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard. Uh, I pulled item C, 'cause I noted, I noticed that the correction, including my acknowledgement on behalf of the residents of East Bethel, of Troy Leschinsky for his extreme amount of work over the years to make sure that the firemen had a good pension system, uh, we're back in the notes where they should have been the last time we looked at them, but something else came up. And maybe it was in the last version, but now it says October 10th, notes instead of October 9th, so...
It should be October, whatever the date of the meeting was.
Well, according to the packet and according to the video, it was October 9th.
That's correct.
So it should, they, so they need, they don't need to resubmit them, but...
No, we, we can...
Correct the date to October 9th.
We can make that correction in the street.
So anyway, all right, with that correction, uh, I move that we approve item C, second. Motion made and seconded, all approved, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard. Bob, you pulled item D.
Uh, planning commission reappointments, Glenn Terry served la, 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 Tanner Balfany, anyway, they got reappointed to the commission, and I had some reservations that I'd like to discuss with staff at another time. I guess for right now, I'd, I'd be okay with saying those two appointments are fine, but there's a couple things that I think need to be addressed, and I don't think this is the proper forum to do it. You agreeable with that, Eric? You and Jack?
Yeah, if it's just the comments of one, you're just comments, we can certainly go over those.
What's that?
We can certainly meet with you to go over those.
Well, I, I think some of it, it's gotta be, the way, the way it's done, it's gotta be restructured, and it's gotta get away from the me, 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 like, I don't like, I don't like this and that, because people are not on those commissions to say what they like, it's, it's supposed to be representative of all the people, and I think some of these meetings, if, if you are the chair, then you get the facts out, and then you move on down the road, you don't keep beating it over and over and over and over, and I think that's why some of these meetings go on so long, is you hit the same points, but you're hitting them over and over and over and over, and I think those need to be separated out and say, okay, we've got the point, we know the information we need, now let's move on. And whoever sits in the chair position, and I, I've been on a couple different commissions where, and that's exactly what we did, we, you deal with the facts, and it cannot be a personal, and it may be hard, but it can't be taken personally, and, you know, we sit up here, we gotta make some decisions, but it's not based necessarily on what we like, but it's based on the facts that are coming before us. And I think it really kind of troubles people when someone comes up to the planning commission and all they're hearing is, well, I don't like that, or I don't like structures this way, and I don't like structures that way. Well, that's fine that you don't like that, but I think you should either keep it to yourself, or just don't say anything, because I think it does a disjustice to the residents. And I, I think, I'm not in charge of the planning commission, so it's not my situation there, you know, to get my concerns out there if you can do that.
But you are the liaison for the city council, you are the liaison, so...
Yeah, but I'm not the supervisor. That's, Aaron's over the planning, if you could talk to him, or if they watch this meeting, that'd be great. And, you know, that being said, I, I, you know, Tanner's on there, Tanner's got a lot of knowledge, he really does, he's got a lot of history, and one thing that people gotta realize when commissioners are gone, you lose all that knowledge, so now you bring in new people that know absolutely nothing, and you can wind up with a worse situation. But it was kinda like when Matt was talking, you know, if you tweak it here, tweak it there, I think it'd be just fine. That being said, I'll approve the appointments.
Well, I, I just, I didn't appreciate it very much on February 27th, 2023, when three members of the planning commission showed up here and two of them spoke to us over something as simple as, and, and they were, seemed outraged, and they, Tanner himself said it was ridiculous what we were proposing. What we, what we were proposing was that a word that's used often in our city code, resident, actually be defined. I just happened to look in the definitions, and nowhere in the city code did it define the word resident. You have to be a resident to be on the city council, you have to be a resident to be on the commissions or authorities. All we were doing was using the state-approved definition for the term resident, and these people act like we murdered their dog, I mean, it's like, it was ridiculous, and in fact, I'll turn his words back on him, that's what he said to us, I thought his behavior was ridiculous, I wasn't, I didn't enjoy it, forget about enjoying it, I didn't respect it one bit, and for that reason, I was, I was not inclined to agree with Bob, but I've come around because I've had a lot of people give me second chances in life when I misbehave, so I guess I'm inclined to do the same with others, but, uh, I, I honestly, my personal opinion is that, uh, such a person who clearly was the chair at the time and led the contingent that showed up here and gave us a dressing down as if we were doing something wrong, does, in my opinion, does not deserve to be the chairman anymore, and I would hope that the planning commission would have Sharon Johnson be the chairman henceforth, that's my personal opinion. With that, I'll, I'll move to approve, or a second year motion, I guess it would be.
I agree with what Kevin said though, too, just the way that was handled, I would definitely be in favor of Sharon Johnson as the chairman.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
And it's up to the planning commission, they approve their own chairman, but, uh, I would at least listen to what the city council is saying anyway. Any further discussion of the matter? If not, motions made and seconded to approve the appointment or reappointment of Tanner Balfany and Glenn Terry to the planning commission, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard. State election funds agreement, it's a pretty simple question, what is the basis for allocation of these funds, because it says 67,000 and change goes to the county, out of which we're supposed to get 1,163. Our population at about 12,300 is about 3.24% of the county population of 370,000, so if it's, if it's, it's not based on population, 'cause that way it would be 3.24% of the 67,000, instead, it's 1.73%, almost half, so Ms. Frost will...
Wheels are turning.
Will clarify things for us, what is the basis for the...
I believe it's based on the percentage of registered voters.
Percentage of registered voters, okay. Well, that would be different than the total population. Thank you.
Yep.
And that's my only question.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, with that clear explanation, I move that we approve item E on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard. I pulled item I, just because I was the pain in the neck that wanted to look at the alternative amortization for the Metropolitan Council Reserve Capacity Loan, and it's good that we did that, we, we looked at a different amortization schedule, just like with a mortgage, you look at a 15-year... You look at a 15-year mortgage, can we afford it? We look at a 25-year mortgage, whatever, you know, lower payments, but accumulates more interest, you know. And it's good that we did that quick analysis, but based on Mike's considered opinion, and I value his opinion a great deal, we're just gonna go with the 10-year amortization. And that way it's, it's a consistent, the least interest accrual, and it's only $100,000 difference per year anyway, so. But I'm, I'm glad we went through the, through the exercise, Mike, but I, I just defer to your opinion on it. So with that, that's just explanation. With that, I move that we approve item I.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
I just got one question on it for a discussion. Jack, are we locked into this or say can in five years, can we change?
We can, if, if conditions change, we can renegotiate or we can pay it off.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Mr. Mungo, the floor is yours for the ice arena scoreboard.
I just pulled this so Jack can give a, a brief introduction to it and tell us what it's all about.
In the memo that I sent out earlier today, it's an issue we've had with the scoreboard. That scoreboard was installed in 1996. It's a solid-state electronic unit. It operates in a very harsh and unforgiving environment of extreme temperatures, humidity and condensation issues. And as a result, this thing has had issues that are beyond repair. It happened a year earlier than we had budgeted for replacement. And we've had lots of complaints with parents. To solve the problem temporarily, Nate has gone in there with our crews. We've rotated the scoreboard so it's visible from the players' bench and the coaches' side from the west end, but it's not visible from the bleachers side. So there's an issue that this does need to be replaced. If we're gonna replace it this year, we actually need to go ahead and place that order now, because it's gonna take some time in January for it to come in and to get any use out of it and try to mitigate some of the concerns of the parents of the St. Francis Youth Hockey Association and the high school team. This would be a benefit to them. And we do have the funds to do that. And we won't be endangering our cushion that we have for our emergency repair plan. We can accumulate these funds with the payments that we get from ice rentals through the end of the year. We should be back up around our $100,000 minimum that we need to keep in there for emergency repairs.
So we're hoping to have this installed in January?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I'm sure Nate, you'll give us a update on it as to when it comes in and when it's resolved.
One, one other thing about this, too, is that in our conversations with the Youth Hockey Association, on this being a project for next year, we discussed ways to increase our advertising revenue to help pay this back. These scoreboards will have the capacity to have ads placed on them. Also, too, we talked about some other fundraisers and we may even have to look at the potential for examining our ice rate charges again, too, for the next year. So we are gonna be in okay financial shape if we do this, but we'll have to look at some main other sources of revenue to help us get this fund replenished faster that, at that, at that way.
Do we have a resolution or something to do?
I got some questions, but we gotta get to that part.
We, we just, you just need to authorize. We, we can approve this just for the minutes. So if you approve us purchasing the scoreboard with that, then it'll be okay.
Well, I'll make the motion that we approve it. Can we get a second?
Second.
Discussion. Bob?
Yeah. A couple of questions. How the heck can a locker room clock cost $725? Are these things digital or what? I mean, is there some explanation they gave you for that?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The, the locker room clock would correspond with the main clock. It would be back in the back room so that the team can tell when it's the period, the intermission period's over. That's not included in what we're buying that we, that's not, that wasn't an option. That's, was one of the things that had on there, but that's not included in what we're purchasing. Yeah, I don't know why it's that much money either. It's a digital clock.
I mean, clocks a clock.
Yeah, it's good. It's because it's synced with the main clock over the rink, so the teams will know how much time they have left to come back on the ice. But we're not, that's not included with what we're proposing.
Electronic team names of set of four, 97.15.
That's another option that we're not including with this one. That would be on top of this price.
Well, don't, doesn't that come with a control bar where you can type in and then it'll put the stuff up on the?
The team names are that. You'd, you'd have to spend another $10,000 to get those team names added. So the one we're, that we're proposing does not have that. The one we're proposing is from AIM Electronics. And the, only thing that's crossed out on that is number three, so the rest of that material would, or items would be on there.
Okay, what's campus floor artwork?
So on the bottom of the scoreboard and in the picture there, you can kind of see it. Underneath, the, the scoreboard is a big panel, and we could have that be whatever we want. It could be the city logo. It could be the, it could be, it could be, if somebody wanted to sponsor the rink, it could be their logo up there to create some more funding.
Like a Sand Hill Craig?
Yeah.
Okay, I was looking at, oh, still a pretty good price.
So the, so the number we're talking about is, is the net, net number?
The net number from AIM is 39,895, correct. Yep. That's out the door.
Is, is St. Francis Hockey, do they kick in for this at all or?
So all this funding for the ice arena comes from ice rentals. There's no public funding in this. There's no tax dollars. It's all, it's run like an enterprise business, so it's, it's, it is, all this money is from the youth hockey and the high school ice rentals, basically.
So it's cash flow positive?
Correct, yep.
Okay. We have been working with the Youth Hockey Association. We have a great relationship with them in doing some fundraisers. They've contributed some funds over the past two years. There's some improvements in the arena and we want to continue working with them on that for future improvements.
When I went over this, I had just one question. You, you gave a very good explanation of how we wound up owning an ice arena a couple of months ago. My question is very simple. Why, why are we still in the business of owning an ice arena? We're a government, not a business, you know? And that just, that just perplexes me. Maybe I need retraining or something.
I think the short answer to that is no business wants to get in the business of owning an ice arena.
That's kind of what I thought the answer would be.
Yep.
Well, what, what do I say? It's not gonna mean. What benefits, what benefits do the East Bethel kids have for skating when you've got St. Francis, the high school, and whoever come in there and they pretty much dominate the rink? So when, when do East Bethel kids get time out there? Or do they?
Or put another way, have we ever considered opening it for public skating off times?
We have, and we have periods.
Done pencil out.
Year in the week. Unfortunately, they don't correspond with the prime ice time rentals.
Wind up with one person skiing around.
Well, you know, when, when you have the skating that's open from three to five on Wednesday afternoon, you're not gonna attract too many people. But we can't afford to give the prime ice time away because we need that revenue to run the arena. To answer your question, Bob, we have the outdoor rink, which is available for skating all the time. Indoors, as long as we're gonna run it and cash flow it, we're gonna have to sell that prime ice time to the high school or the hockey association.
I've had parents ask me, saying, well, why are we paying for this and my kids can't even use it?
Well, and, and again, these funds are generated from user fees. They're not tax dollars, at least for the operation of it. Now, it covers some of the depreciation, but not all of it, but it does cover the operational cost of the arena.
Well, did it cover when Mr. Stranland came in and secured the walls because they had some crumbling problems in the New Zamboni and New Flor-? Did we cover that or St. Francis?
No, no, that.
It was all user fees and all that.
Covered from user fees.
So the hockey families and the high school are paying for it, basically.
All right. Gotta ask.
And like Mike said, we got a grant for the Zamboni.
Zamboni has a grant, yeah.
Okay. Special Zamboni grant.
Any further discussion? All those in favor approving the expenditure to get a new scoreboard for the ice arena, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
That brings us down to new business, variance application, reconsideration.
See you, Kerry. See you, Mike.
Thanks a lot for your time.
Thanks for coming in.
You too, Nate. Thank you.
As promised, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, here's the law.
You're, you're still stuck here. Sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. Not a problem. You are familiar with the variance request for the property in Oak Grove.
Yep.
At the October 9th, 2023 council meeting, a planning commission recommendation to deny the variance request was approved unanimously by the city council. However, the applicant immediately requested a decision be made in order for him to apply for a variance for a front lot line reduction for one access point. It ultimately is the council's decision. However, council's wishes were to send it back to the planning commission for a recommendation on whether the variance request should, the applicant should be allowed to reapply. On the October 24th, 2023 planning commission meeting, discussion for the reconsideration request and a unanimous recommendation that the city council deny the applicant's request to allow for a reapplication for a front lot line reduction for a period of one year beginning October 9th, 2023, the date of the first denial. That is the planning commission's recommendation. I'm requesting that the city council consider that recommendation and direct staff on how to inform the applicant of the council's final reconsideration decision.
Well, my decision is kind of the same as it was the first time around. And after listening to the residents and the gentleman himself saying that, he, he couldn't say if he was going to split it off into two after there was one entrance, there's two properties, and he couldn't say whether he was gonna not do that or not. And I guess after listening to the concern of the residents and East Bethel, I don't see any benefit.
So do you, you wanna make a motion?
I move that we deny it.
Second.
Motion is made by Mr. DeRosh and seconded by Mr. Smith that we deny the request for reconsideration of the variance. Any further discussion?
I just wanna say that I think the residents spoke loud and clear in what they wanted, and this doesn't benefit East Bethel at all. So that's the reason for why I say deny it.
And the planning commission considered the matter very thoroughly, so, and I commend them for doing that.
They thanked us for sending it down to them.
Yeah.
That's cool.
That's what they're there for. See, it's not all whining on our part. All right, motion made and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Item 7A2, use variance request, 1311, 229th Ave., Northeast.
Right.
Mr. Berg?
That is me again.
Your honor.
Mr. Mayor. At the September 11th, 2023 city council meeting, the potential expansion of a legal non-conforming business was presented to the city council, who gave a positive informal recommendation for staff to work with the property owner to seek formal approval of the business expansion. The item was brought in front of the planning commission on October 24th, 2023, where a public hearing was held. There was discussion of the request and a made of facts of findings regarding the request, along with a recommendation of approval from of a variance, a use variance by the planning commission. The findings of fact have been identified there in items one, two, and three for your review. The city council should review the request, consider the planning commission's formal recommendation, and approve the variance, the use variance, with conditions presented in Resolution 2023-72. And I can answer any questions based on that quick summary.
Well, we have covered this previously in good detail, so.
Make a motion to approve the variance with conditions as presented in Resolution 2023-72. So that would be an approval of that resolution.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Item 7A3, preliminary plat, Stranland Farm.
Thank you.
Well, you're just the center of attention in there, aren't you?
Yeah, I gotta get this set here so we can have all the facts for this one. This one's gonna take me a little longer. No summary here, but you did hear the concept plan back in July 25th, 2023, for a 21-lot rural residential subdivision known as Stranland Farm that was presented to the planning commission. After a public hearing was held, the planning commission made recommendations and the developer made revisions presented in the original concept plan to the city council on August 14th for some feedback. On October 10th of 2023, the developer submitted an application for a preliminary plat of the Stranland Farm subdivision. The plat consists of 20 buildable, single-family rural residential lots on 73.90 acres of the proposed lots. One lot meets the minimum two-acre standard. The rest of the lots are above the two-acre minimum. The average lot size in the proposed plat is 3.27 acres, therefore all lots meet city code requirements. Street access, again, just in summary, is off of Luann Drive or Anoka County Highway 74 by the creation of a new extension of 219th. I will scroll through here to find an image. As Luann Drive or Highway 74 is an Anoka County Highway, the Anoka County Highway Department was sent the preliminary plat for a review. A comment letter was received on October 19th of 2023 and is attached for review. Any and all comments from the Anoka County Highway Department slash engineer will need to be satisfactorily addressed by the developer prior to the release or filing of a final plat. The Public Works Department for the City of East Bethel reviewed the preliminary plat and are in support of the subdivision as proposed with the recommendation of removal of the gravel cul-de-sac on 219th, the existing one, and make it a full connection to the platted new road. The city engineer submitted comments on November 7th of 2023 and are included as attachment four. Again, just like the county, the developer will need to satisfactorily address any comments prior to filing of a final plat from the city engineer. The fire department comments regarding cul-de-sac radius identified in the concept plan have been satisfactorily addressed. The building department still has no comment in the preliminary plat stage, as there's no proposed homes at this point. The parks commission reviewed the concept plan on August 8th and will review it again at the November 14th meeting, which is tomorrow night. My assumption is from the previous concept plan, the standard city cash in lieu of land will be the determination, but we'll find that out for sure tomorrow, but that must be taken care of prior to final plat. And October 24th, the planning commission held a public hearing where two residents spoke. They were immediate neighbors on 219th and expressed concerns related to the road connection, water runoff, soil testing, and the creation of a potential berm. After review of the preliminary plat, the planning commission by a four-to-zero recommendation, four-to-zero vote, recommended to the city council approval of the preliminary plat. Council should review this request, consider the, the planning commission's formal recommendation, and approve the preliminary plat of Stranland Farm as presented with the conditions in Resolution 2023-72. The developer is here if there are any questions.
Make a motion to approve the preliminary plat of Stranland Farm as presented with conditions identified, Resolution 2023-72.
Second.
Is that 2023-72 or three?
Two.
I think it's three.
Yeah, I think it's three, two. Aaron? Let me scroll. Let me find my resolution here.
In the packet here.
The staff information is wrong. It should be 2023-73.
Okay, I.
Yep.
Make a correction to my motion then, 2023-73.
Okay, great. So we have a motion?
Second.
Motion seconded by Mr. DeRosh. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None heard. Agenda item 7A4, preliminary plat, Classic Commercial Park, Fifth Edition.
Thanks again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In November of 2019, TNG Land Incorporated filed a final plat for the Soder Commercial Park Fourth Edition, which included a 20-acre outlot for future development. In January of 2020, CND Properties North LLC purchased the outlot property. CND's North LLC has submitted a preliminary plat known as the Classic Commercial Park Fifth Edition application to divide that existing outlot into three individual parcels. The plat consists of two commercial parcels and an additional outlot. Staff have reviewed the submission, along with the Soder Commercial Park Fourth Edition plat details, and offer the following comments. A commercial site plan must be reviewed and approved prior to the issuance of any building permits, requiring submittal of plans include, but are not limited to grading, drainage, architectural landscaping, lighting, storm, water, utility plans, basically all the requirements of a commercial job site. Utilities will be, this, these lots will be served by municipal sewer and water. All fees associated with municipal services are required to be paid prior to the issuance of any building permits. Park dedication, cash in lieu of land will be collected prior to the issuance of any building permits. Required park fees will reflect the most current fee schedule at the time the building permit is issued, based on the plat that was filed in 2019. The planning commission, on October 4th of 2023, held a public hearing and recommend approval of the preliminary plat for Classic Commercial Park Fifth Edition. The city council should review the preliminary plat request, consider the planning commission's formal recommendation, and approve the preliminary plat as presented in resolution 2023-74.
One quick question. When the park fees are calculated, is that based on the property being mark-to-market current?
It's based on the raw land value right now.
But now.
Yep. Prior to, yep.
As opposed to 2019.
Correct. Yes, the current fee schedule.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat, resolution 2023-74.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Do we have any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving resolution number 2023-74, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. None heard. Aaron, again.
I won't bore you all with all of those great details all over again. Because this was a pre-platted outlot and all of the other conditions have been met, and the requirement of all those other items prior to any building permits, we're going to go ahead and offer up the final plat as well. There are no changes between the preliminary plat and the final plat. So the planning commission also reviewed the final plat on October 24th and made a recommendation to approve the final plat for Classic Commercial Park Fifth Edition. City council should review the final plat request, consider the planning commission's formal recommendation, and approve the final plat as presented in resolution 2023-75.
I'll make a motion to approve final plat, resolution 2023-75.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None heard. So what are you going to do with the rest of your evening, Aaron?
Well, so not the rest of this. There's only a few minutes left.
Oh, yeah, you're going to gut it out.
Yeah.
Okay. See, the next item on the agenda is 8G1, Sunrise River Water Management Organization, Joint Powers Agreement Amendment.
And I'll take the short version on these. These are items that we've discussed several times in the past. On the first one, the amended joint powers agreement, the City of Ham Lake approved the Sunrise River Water Management Organization amended JPA agreement at their October 2nd, 2023 meeting. This concludes a year of discussions with Ham Lake regarding their consideration to leave the WMO and finalizes their decisions remain as a member. The amendments proposed to the JPA are mainly referencing conditions and requirements to state statutes which govern the operation of the WMO. These type of changes ensure the JPA is not static and stays current with legislative changes. The main procedural amendments were to determine the number of member votes required to approve the annual SRWMO budget and the fact that one city council member from each municipality will be required to be appointed to the board. With this, staff recommends approval of resolution 2023-80, approving an updated joint powers agreement for the Sunrise River Watershed Management Organization.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2023-80.
I'll second it. So motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None heard. And glad you guys got that done, whoever did the heavy waterlifting on that one. Glad to, glad to see it worked out. And the Sunrise River budget, is that an action item?
That's an action item, too. That's to approve the 2024 Sunrise River Water Management Organization budget, which is presented as attachment one in your packet. Staff recommends city council consider approval of the Sunrise River WMO draft 2024 budget as exhibited in attachment one.
See, where is attachment one here?
One sixty-three.
It's like middle of the page.
One sixty-three?
Yep.
One sixty-three.
Correct.
And four. Oops. Okay, so it's a long attachment one.
Correct. Holy smokes. And that budget proposed for 2024 is $47,186. And the three-year average of the previous budgets in this were $45,190. So there was a little increase in cost. There is a cap on those now, currently $50,000, also under the new formula for approving budgets that were in the JPA. It only takes a majority of votes to approve it if the budget increases by no more than 10%.
So I'd make a motion to approve the proposed budget for the Sunrise River Watershed Management Organization for 2024. The total budget, $47,186, with East Bethel's portion of it being $13,456.
Second, I have a couple of questions.
Motion made and seconded. Do we have a discussion? Bob?
Yeah. How are these percentages figured out on the top? Lindland, 47%, East Bethel, 30%, Columbus, 19%, and Ham Lake, 4%. Is that on water? That, it, it, it's a ratio, the old formula was a ratio of acres in the watershed to market value. The new ratio that was discussed was public waters and public lands is a ratio to acres in the watershed. But what we decided to do is market value really has no influence on this. We'll just take an average of what the last five years were. This will be the percentage assigned to each one to cover those operating costs of this budget.
Non-operating costs.
Non-operating costs.
Yep.
So proration method seemed good to you guys, huh?
Yes.
Yeah, that, it'll be a more consistent.
Yeah.
Method that way as well, because don't have to do all the calculations every year that you pretty much know where we're going to fall.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the budget?
Aye.
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 Opposed. None heard. So that brings us down to staff reports and council reports. I remembered it this time, Aaron.
I have nothing, I have nothing to add from the staff level.
Counsel report. Mr. Smith and I had a very exciting time touring the sewage treatment plant and water plant for East Bethel with a member of the staff of Metropolitan Council, Ned, and of course, the staff working for the Met Council at the sewage treatment plant. It was informative. Glad we did it. And recommend it to you, other chaps who want to in the coming year. So, and it gives us a good idea of how on top of his game Mr. Ashford is, because.
He's pretty sharp.
He is a very sharp young man. Also wanted to mention that Wednesday night, six to nine, is the Fall Town Hall meeting being held in the senior center next door. And invite everybody to come to that. Oh, and also Jim and I and Tim Miller attended the grand opening or ribbon cutting for Nexus Psychiatric Residential Treatment Facility over on 189th, and we wish them well. Anything else?
I have two updates. Attended the Sunrise River WMO meeting. Couple items, some good news on where they asked for additional monies for ironing out the JPA agreements for the attorneys. They came in under budget on that, a total of $439. So East Bethel would be getting $109.75 back. And that, the question was, do we want to have a check back? Or do we want to have it as a credit against next year's budget payment? Or they, there is some, a little bit more work to do with the bylaws, very little that that monies could be applied towards that.
We, we also owe an additional $323, which I would recommend we apply that credit to that payment, have them send us an invoice, and us pay that amount, and we're all squared up.
Okay.
Your recommendation sounds reasonable to me.
Yep.
Yep.
There was, there will be a boundary change between the Sunrise River and Coon Creek Water District. Some very small changes right around Coon Lake. Board of Water and Soil Resources is noticing that, or publicly noticing the boundary change on November 3rd and November 10th in local newspapers. Anyone can request a hearing by Bowser before November 30th. If no public hearing is requested, Bowser will make a decision on the boundary change within 30 days. So that is that announcement. October 26th, I attended the Highway 65 Coalition Meeting. And lots of notes on that. Let's see. So, addressing the Highway 65 update plans as far as Bunker Lake south to Highway 10, Section 1, 81st to Highway 10, they are doing a funding request for preliminary engineering. There's still a lot to work, a lot of work to do on that. This is very early stages. They did have some plans in place, but they need to rework some of that preliminary stuff, apparently. Section 2, which is 93rd Avenue to 117th, that's the section that will be starting first. They figure that they'll have plans and specs ready to be bid out for, and I believe a completion. No, specs bid out by late 2025, early 26. So that a bid can be released by that time to start bidding. And then after that, work would commence on that relatively soon. Section 3, it's essentially Bunker Lake Boulevard. They are starting to develop a concept plan for that with some sort of grade separated intersection. Let's see. The mill overlay will start out here on 65, spring 2024, 18 miles. You can already see that a lot of work is being done with the switch lanes, bypass lanes. And they will also be replacing the box culvert, culvert south of Viking. That, they hope to do that yet this fall, before they start the overlay in the spring. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Well, we had a little action on Coon Lake last weekend, neighborhood. It was actually a strong armed robbery. I was off a hill and somebody walked up to a door, showed a gun. There was five participants. They had a laptop, some other stuff out of the house, and then they had gotten another home. I haven't got the actual police report. I just talked to the people that got robbed. So it's moving up here. I don't think we've had anything like that happen the whole time I've been here. Words wise, don't keep your car openers in your vehicles. They break the window, take your garage door opener out, and then they rob your insurance card so that they have the address, and then they just come back when they want. So if you keep your garage door opener in your vehicle, you might want to think twice. Lake is still looking good. Still got the dock out. Just pull out to get out one of these days, but these are looking good. Lake is down, it's probably down a couple of feet. It's looking pretty sad, so.
We're hoping for a lot of snow.
Lot of snow. So I got, you know, like Kevin said, Town Hall meeting on Thursday night, six o'clock. You know, there's some way we could do that and hook up a NACE and have people bring some kind of a food item, throw it in a bag, and donate it to NACE. I don't know if that's allowable or not.
Well, you can throw it out. It's pretty late.
For the food shelf?
Do we not, did we ever, did, did we, did you ever find out what's the story with the East Bethel bulletin? Because I checked my mailbox and it still wasn't there today.
It was an issue with the mailing list when we switched the printers. They didn't, either they misplaced it, then we had to resend that to them, so that was the issue with the lateness of the delivery of the newsletter.
Okay. Do we think we're going to get it in time to advertise your event of the 27th? Your recognition event of the 27th?
What recognition event?
Are you opening a can of worms or? No, that, no.
Surprise.
You haven't been told about this by now?
No.
I just mentioned it earlier in the meeting.
I was concentrating on something else, probably.
Think Jack was out of the room at that time.
Yeah.
Well, I was, I was just making it up anyway. Never mind.
Conversation.
Well, and you got anything else I can step on?
I'm good.
I got one thing. I remember during negotiations with Nexus, I believe that they had said that once they're ready to operate or whatever, that they have a monthly meeting. I don't know if you guys remember that. I do. And they said that they'd like. And they said that they'd like, or we have an option for one of the council people to go to that and attend to that. Can we check on that to see how that schedule will be? And then we can either vote on whoever we want there, or we can take turns.
We can switch off.
Yeah.
We can't expect you to take the Sand Hill Crane and Nexus.
You know, I really gotta adjust my schedule for that Sand Hill Crane. Keeps getting in the way.
I know.
But yeah, if you could do that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I got.
Jim and I spent some time with Chief Santos last week going over the complete budget from top to bottom. The whole goal was to identify the true wants, the true needs, and get a better understanding of how their budget operated, how they were spending money, and long-term goal of getting the guys actually more money per hour. So we'll be working on that, you know, in the near future. Got a great understanding of a lot of the things on their budget we didn't understand or I didn't understand personally. And they're gonna be adjusting the budget to make it more clearer or clearer for us to understand for future, you know, observation.
We're still gonna probably do adjusting before. We gotta have it by December eleventh. So we'll keep.
Could you repeat that? I couldn't hear that. I'm sorry.
December eleventh, we have to have the actual budget numbers. So before that, we'll probably be looking at that fire department. We'll bring it back and let you guys know what we come up with.
Okay. Is, is Mike included in that process?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it.
That being said, I will adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those.